Cat TV is celebrating 30 years of community media. Help support Cat TV's next 30 years by becoming a member today. Your membership will help us continue covering meaningful, local content. Thank you for supporting your local community media station.
21st, 2022, 6:00 PM. Like to call the meeting to order? Board member roll call. Mike Gardner.
Angie Rawling.
Jamie Percy.
Bob Jarvis.
Hey, Bob.
Hi, Bob.
Approval of the agenda. Town hall update, budget and overall project discussion. Public comment and adjourn.
So moved.
Back it up.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Angie?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
So before we get, before we get started into the town hall update. Excuse me. Um, I want to make a couple of statements about the project. This is, this is a meeting for an update. Um, on the, on the condition of the project, where we're at, what's going on? It's, it's a budget meeting to, um, we have a really well-prepared budget in front of us for the project. I'm not going to allow a, um, argumentative state to happen in this meeting. What has happened has happened and we can't turn back at this point. So, um, this is a move forward project. So we're not going to get into what he said, she said, part of this. This is an informational meeting, an update for the residents and taxpayers of the town of Town Hall. And, um, hopefully we can go from there. And, and like I said, if it gets, uh, to an argumentative state, we will stop right at that point and, um, not continue. I will also, there are several people here in the room. So when we come to public comment, the people that are attending the meeting will have their first, um, chance at public comment. If you're, if you're taking your time to come here, you're going to speak first. And I, I would like to try to limit it to three minutes. And if we have time, we'll come back on, onto some public comment. Okay. I'm not sure how many people are going to be in here, but, um.
A few will.
Yeah, there's a few. So at that point, I'm going to turn this over to Tara, our executive assistant, who has prepared this, um, project, our updates and our budget.
Okay, so do you want to start with budget or updates?
Let's, let's go with the updates first, I think, and then we'll come to the budget.
Okay, so currently with the schoolhouse, as many of you probably noticed, it is, has been wrapped. Um, it should be wrapped in house wrap, so it should protect the building and anything that's left inside of it. Uh, most of the site work has been done here at 511 Center Street. Um, all the prep work for the parking lots, the lights, um, most of that stuff has been completed or will be, um, within the next week. The tree work has been completed, only the stumps are left to be removed. The underground propane tank was installed. The concrete work on the schoolhouse basement, sound tubes, the generator pad. Um, all of that should be started within the next couple of weeks. The old schoolhouse will be moved June 21st. That's the biggest part of this update. Most important part.
I have a question, Tara. Maybe this is a question for Eric, or maybe you can answer. Is that weather permitting on the 21st, Eric, or don't we know?
I don't, I don't believe so.
Okay, just curious. Okay. So I think that's, that's, just so everyone knows, that's rain or shine.
Yep.
Unless it's on major.
Right, right. Right, no, right. I, I, you know, I totally get that. I just wanted to make sure.
There's a frame involved, so.
Okay.
And that should take one day, but possibly two, if there's any hangups. So if, let's say something did happen, a storm or whatever, they have that second day already set aside.
Okay.
The other thing with that is having all the utilities involved. If there was a major storm, they would be elsewhere to fix something.
Right.
You know, it happened a couple of days before or two.
Sure.
Definitely. Fingers crossed they don't cancel. So once, you know, before that move happens, probably by the end of the week, I'll be sending out notices to all of the Center Street residences, as well as the North Town Hall Road residences, because the roads will be closed for an amount of time. They'll also be without power. Um, I'll post those letters online, on our Facebook, town website, at all of the stores, and I'm going to send a banner notice as well, so that a lot of people should be aware of what's happening.
Don't forget the fire department and rescue squad. Please.
Good point, Jamie. The tin ceiling, the slate roof and the hardwood flooring will remain within the schoolhouse after the move. The schoolhouse, once moved, will have a new siding that matches the new town offices. The siding was ordered when the modular was purchased. The light fixtures were quoted by Kelson to match what is currently here. So there will be recessed lighting and we will not be keeping the old light fixtures. Um, the reasoning for that is because there was, um, no real well way to tell what we would need to refurbish them. Um, it could be costly and they would also not be energy efficient. After the schoolhouse has been moved, the town highway, highway department will clean up the property at 2758 North Town Hall Road. Um, and return it, you know, they'll be removing the old foundation, filling the subsequent hole and adding topsoil and grass seed. Last update is that the town highway department will also be covering the paving of the upper lot and the carriage barn driveway, which saves us some costs there. So there are some questions that the select board will need to decide on.
So let me stop right there for one second. Any of the board members, do you have any questions on the updates and information in, in that first section?
Well, I just have one question because I live on Center Street. If it takes two days, does that mean we will be without power for two days?
No, I think the second day was, um, they would move the building all the way here on the first day. That's the whole, and then you should have power. It's just that one day.
Alright.
Any other questions? Okay, so first decision to be made was the proposed changes to the parking lot plans and the sidewalks. We have, you all should have the drawings with the suggested change on it. It's basically removing the sidewalk that goes all the way down the embankment over here. And an extra sidewalk out behind the building. And adding the stairway across here, up the bank.
So, right, just, just an update, I know, I think the board knows, but just so people are aware of what, what those changes are. I met with, um, Jeff Miller. Eric and I have discussed this a little bit. And we've looked into whether or not we need the sidewalk on the west end of the schoolhouse and coming down that bank, um, and some other things down to there. Some of the sidewalk on the south side of the building itself. Okay, there was an extensive sidewalk along this side of the building. We've met, we've discussed deleting those because it's a significant amount of concrete. Thing that we have, um, made a decision on is the carriage barn road between here and the old town office and church is getting all new blacktop. So we are putting a set of stairs coming down the northerly bank of the new town office between the church and the new town office. We're going to put a set of concrete stairs so that an influx and overflow of parking, uh, could park on Carriage Barn Road. And, um, they could use those stairs instead of coming down a grass bank to get into the new town office. Just to be clear on that. Sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, but.
Oh, that's fine.
Okay.
Um, so that was one of the proposed changes. The other one was that there was a large sign that was supposed to face Route 7, um, as well as a tree that was supposed to go out on the corner of the town hall property. And we're basically proposing that we switch the two so that the tree has more space. If it, um, if there was a gathering or a tree lighting, there's more space over there on that side of the building and be able to be seen from Route 7 a little easier. Also, having a sign out there might encourage people to use that, that drive that isn't really, um, supposed to be used as an entrance. So if it's over here with a nice garden planted, I think it's a nice entrance for the new town hall once everything is all set. So I think we need you to either approve that or not.
This, what is the board's pleasure? Do you want to, um, do you want to vote on that approval of those changes or, or, um, just go with them at this point? I don't, there's not a significant cost in what we're doing. Uh, the tree versus the sign location, that's, that's location, there's, right.
Right.
So, so to be clear on the tree, so everyone knows, and I, and I know Joyce, you have a vested interest in this, so that's why I want to be clear on this. The old spruce tree that we, um, used in the past for, for our lights and Christmas lights, um, was a diseased tree. For, that's from our, that's from our town tree or, and that's from Dave Dent's. So that's why we removed the tree. But in that plan, kind of my plan, to speak honestly, um, I would, I want to plant a more manageable tree. 14, 16 footer. I mean, I don't want to go with an eight foot tree to start with. I'd like to get a sizable tree. Um, Dave and I talked about it and, and plant that tree to still have that Christmas lighting so that we can continue that tradition because I think it is a very important piece. So just, just so everybody's clear on what, what that was totally about. Um, one other thing on the tree work, um, is Joel, Joel has a tree out here on the end of Carriage Barn Road that is overhanging and needs to be taken down. Professionally, we can't do it with our, with our road crew. In the same line, when they take that down, all of those trees, when you come down Barber Pond Road and, and can no longer look west.
Right.
We're going to take those trees as well. Um, it's a bunch of scrub trees that are really worth nothing. Bunch of river ash and poplar and whatever else.
By the markers you're talking about.
Yeah, right, right at the end of Carriage Barn Road, at the end of the carriage barn, there's a significant number of trees right there that have just grown over the years and we're going to take those trees down so that people traveling up and down, you don't have that diminished view anymore. And we're going to take them down at the same time.
Okay, so.
If the board, if the board's fine with, with not making any, um, making a motion on these changes, I'm fine with it. But if the board wants to make a motion and either approve or deny, that's fine with me too.
I don't think we need one. I think it's fine.
No, I don't think so, but I mean, you know, okay, I'm good with it.
But, I mean, they're reasonable requests, so. I don't have a problem with them. Robert?
Uh, I agree. I don't think we need to, uh, I mean, I don't think we voted for it the way it used to be either. So I don't think we need to vote here. It's just a decision we're making.
I guess it was, I guess it was just in the original plan, Bob, and we're making a, we're making a change to the original plan, but it's a cost-saving, uh, measure, to be perfectly honest with you, on the concrete portion of it, for sure. Eric?
You might want to mention the parking lot change down there as well.
Okay.
The bad lot.
Good point. So, um, with the location, in, in that same meeting when I was here with, um, Jeff Miller, who was finishing up the, um, final grading and stuff, um, we had the discussion of, a, a lot of it revolved around winter maintenance. Um, the light pole location in the southernmost parking lot. We, we moved the southernmost parking lot boundary. We moved it north a little bit and we lost some parking space in that lower parking lot. But other than that, we were going to have to try to plow around light poles. So now it's a straight shot to plow. And, and I don't think, by the time we add the parking on Carriage Barn Road with the blacktop up there and this, and the stairs coming down, it's just, it's the same access whether you're coming up the hill or coming down the hill.
Yep.
Yeah, so we didn't really lose any parking area.
Still having parking area down there, it's just not.
It's not as large.
We lose a three, yeah, three places maybe here.
No, I think we lost like nine.
Oh, the backside, okay.
Yeah, so we lost, we may have lost 11 parking spaces.
No, I just.
But, um, I don't think that's a significant amount. We still have plenty of parking down there on that, on that lower level.
Yeah. No, I don't, I just didn't want to eliminate that parking thing.
Yeah, no, we're not eliminating any of it. We just, we, it's just that one part of it.
Yeah.
It also actually makes things easier to grade, to the tennis courts and so on and so forth.
Right.
You know, once again, a lot of it is a cost-saving measure.
Right.
Because, you know, the, the grading portion of it, it's a little more entailed. It's, it's more blacktop when we get to that point. It's just, it's kind of a cost savings too.
No, I just.
Right.
As far as, didn't want to eliminate because then we'd have to go back to fire safety because of fire protection on the building and all that.
Right, no, we're good with that.
We're just taking pieces off, so.
That's right.
Um, next decision is the AC in the schoolhouse part of the building. There are two options here. The 9900 one is, would be units on the wall, either at the top or bottom, like wall-mounted units.
The mini splits?
Yeah, so, and the $12,000 one would be like it is here in the fil, in the ceiling.
No, the mini splits, they're heat pumps, correct? Not just AC units? Okay.
So they'll do heat and AC?
Ceiling units will also just, uh, they'll be up in the, up in the attic.
Right.
Instead of on the wall or. It's the same system.
Want the people to understand that it's, it's both, it's not just AC, that's all.
And there's a, there's a $2,200 difference between the two. I guess that's probably a board, that would be a board vote, um, which way we want to go with the AC. We should vote on that.
My question would be, I know that we're going to have to maintain, so they're not going to be using it like we do here every single day. I mean, yes, you'd have to keep it at a reasonable temperature, correct? Like 50 or 60? When they're not in use.
Well, that, that room will have its own.
It will have a thermometer.
Correct. It's not going to be attached to this bill.
Right. It'll be its own entity, so to speak, and that's why we're putting those in there. So we can control, absolutely. I mean, you know, when it's not being used for three or four days.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
We don't have, we don't have to keep it at 72, but when we want to have a meeting.
Right.
We can keep it at 40.
Okay.
Keep you happy.
I don't know if you can get it, you plan on getting a smart thermometer for that too?
There's also baseboard, uh, heat in there as well.
Okay.
So it's not just.
Alright.
It's not just the wall units.
High water baseboard in there.
And how will it work with the basement?
Yeah, I was going to ask, what's, what's the plan for heating and cooling the basement?
The same, it'll be high water baseboard upstairs and down.
Okay.
Then it would be one unit upstairs and one down for the.
Okay.
So is the, uh, just aesthetically, the difference is two of those Mitsubishi, uh, air conditioners attached to the wall somewhere in, uh, across from each other, I imagine. Or something that's, uh, that's somewhat hidden and we would pipe the cool air into vents coming out of the ceiling? Is that correct?
Correct. The, the air handler would be up in the attic. You know, I don't follow that, it's condensation. You have to get out, so.
That maintenance, the whole total maintenance of the thing is going to be indifferent.
The potential for something to happen with the air handles and the, and the attic is greater than. The wall unit, just.
Right.
But then with the, uh, with the wall units, I guess if they ever, uh, quit or, or we had issues with them or they just got old, you could just take them down. I'm, I'm trying to think, I mean, it's a historic, it's an historic part of the building. I, I believe we're going to have the floor, we're going to have the ceiling, uh, looking like the old schoolhouse. And I, I don't know. It doesn't, it doesn't seem nice to me to have the two, the, the two wall units, but at the same time, if there's a condensation issue, I didn't realize that for the, uh, for the one unit. I, I don't know, I, I thought I was leaning towards the one unit, even though it was a little more expensive. But now, after what I just heard, I'm not sure what I'm leaning toward.
As far as maintenance and all that goes, it's easier to maintain a mini split system, uh, versus a added system. And also, you do have to replace a condenser or something like that. It's a lot easier, so it's less labor intensive in the long run.
Right, and they look just like the, the 1800, uh, you know, in the 1800s, they had those Mitsubishi units, right?
Right, yeah, I mean, depends on what you want it.
And you could build, we've done that.
A console for it.
Cover over it.
Yep.
So that would be the thing on.
Yeah. Okay, did you hear that? Did you hear that, Bob?
I, I did. That, that, that's reassuring. I don't, I don't have a strong opinion. I guess there's pros and cons to both.
Well, the, so playing devil's advocate, I could argue your point because, um, and I, and I was kind of caught in between myself on this, but once we put the baseboard hot water heat in there, we've lost the historic versus having a cast iron.
Oh, all steel.
An old, you know, cast iron radiator in there too, so. Not, you know, just throwing that out there as well, just to argue the point a little bit, but, um, you know. So what's the board's pleasure?
I would think for maintenance and for, uh, and for cost, probably the, the dual units. That's what I'm hearing recommended by those in the know.
My experience working on them, I know the mini splits are much more user-friendly.
All entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion that we, uh, go with the two Mitsubishi head units, but, uh, heat pumps.
Second that.
Any more discussion? All those in favor? Angie?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Okay, uh, to your next decision. We have three ways to decide the windows. The first option being Marvin double hung fiberglass exterior cottage style and unequal sashes at 14,400. Uh, the second is a pair of dime, all vinyl interior, exterior, exterior double hung, non-cottage style, equal sassy, sashes. Oh, I can't talk today. 5,240. And the last option is to rebuild the existing windows. Um, the spiral balances is optional. Um, and there actually are no jam counter weights, um, to remove. Um, but we would have to buy Marvin storm, uh, wood storm windows and it, uh, there's more upkeep and maintenance of the storms. Um, if we go that route, we could go that route for 4,000, not including fixing the glass that is broken.
How many windows are we talking? Four?
No, it would be all the windows.
Right, a couple of them come out.
Yeah.
And they could be reused unless, on the south side, there are no proposed windows. There used to be in the building, there's.
That is, next to Joyce. Someone's waving to him. Next to Joyce.
This one?
Yeah.
So right now, there's no proposed windows on the south side. If you want to keep that. There are two openings, you can find.
The original.
We're taking out one window in the, in the entry. Egress door. Then on the west side, there's a double window that's going to be, one's going to be taken out for the building too, so. Extra doors, two extra windows that we can use on the south side. If you want windows facing south.
Right. We could, we could add, we could add a couple of windows on that south side if we wanted to, after the move, if we decided that.
Right, because you're removing, if you keep the original windows, you're removing two of them.
Okay. And that, and that's in that $14,400 price?
For?
For the mark, for.
That's, that's, that's the new windows.
Right, but that, that's counting if we took those two window, or not. Okay, okay, so if we put windows on the south side, it would be additional to the 14,4. Or, or any of these numbers actually, right?
Correct.
Except for the 4,000 one, because that one's the original window, right?
We were including, we were taking out those two windows.
Okay, so, so no matter what, if we added windows on the south side of the building, there's an additional cost. I just want everybody to know that, right? I thought that's what we had talked about, but I wanted to make sure, Eric, that's all.
Just, is there a different R value between the two types of the Marvin's or the Marvin and the Paraden?
I don't, I don't believe that there is. I can double check on that.
I'm just curious, if one triple pane, double pane.
They're not a triple pane.
Okay.
So I'm going to, I'm going to deviate a little bit from, no, from our, or my original, because Joyce had her hand up on the windows. Joyce held, just so everyone knows who, who's speaking, that's all.
I'm Joyce. We've seen the windows, the windows, um, facing north. They're the, the large windows. That, of course, is part of the historic building fabric. We did investigate, uh, you can actually put indoor storms windows. It covers them from inside. So from the outside, you still see the historic windows and, but you get protection from drafts or anything on the inside, so you wouldn't lose that look. We, we did, we did a lot of research on, on how we could do it. And I know you talked about, and I don't mean to interrupt your meeting.
No, I, I gave you leeway to talk, so you're good.
But anyway, um, the lights.
Joyce, can you come up? Or Dr. Shh, someone just said that they can't really hear you on.
Oh, they can't hear me.
That's the first time I've ever been told that nobody could hear me. Thank you.
No problem. With the windows, we had investigated, um, putting indoor storm windows on it that would encase those windows. Okay? And so you would get, you know, the, the insulation, but you would still have the look. When you come down Center Street, you would see, you know, the building and the old room windows. As far as the lights goes, yes, the lights and the wiring, I understand what you were saying, but, um, they make old schoolhouse lights that are efficient. Probably can even get LED. This is what, uh, I think I sent you pictures of this. This is what a town did in, um, in Vermont. They took an old schoolhouse and turned it into a community center. So you can see that it's, it's feasible to get that look. It still had nice bright lights, okay? So, and of course, you could see on this side, they kept their big windows.
So let me, I'm, I met with, um, Eric and, um, a representative from RK at, at the schoolhouse. We were in the building when we talked about windows. So the Marvin double hung windows are, they're here for 14,000, and this is for the board as well, okay? Those are basically an exact match to what's in there now. It's the same look. It's the same, whatever they are, I don't remember, there's grids in the top. Yeah, the unequal sashes, but there's grids in the top, the, the sashes aren't the same size and they're, and they're clear, you know, clear, no sash on the bottom. Right, Eric, and I'm, right?
Unequal sash.
Yeah, so it's, it's the exact same look, just so that we're all clear on that, as what we have now. Just a energy efficient window versus, um, what's in there now. And, and they're, they're maintenance free. Eric?
Also, the third option there for the, for the storms, those are interior storms.
They're interior?
Interior storms with the unequal sash to match the existing windows.
Windows.
So you won't have grills in different spots.
Right, right.
So that, that's option three is exactly what you're talking about.
But they would be.
But it doesn't give you any.
But they would be energy efficient, because this, this option is not energy efficient, but you have storms.
Storm really is.
Or not really, and then, no, there's, there's no R value. The only R value is the airspace in between, which is about an hour long for airspace. It's not a double thing, it's not a, it's just a, you know, it's just an airspace.
An air gap. Yeah.
I mean, it will cut down on drafts and obviously it's, it's better than what's there now. Yes.
So does the board have any? So does the board have any questions, comments on windows? That's where we're at.
If the Marvin's are look alike, I mean, I just, we're we're working on more efficient building and all that stuff, and if we can keep the aesthetics as similar as possible, I think that's a win situation for us. I mean, it's a little more money, but in the long run, it's going to save us on our fuel and everything else, so.
I just have one question. Eric, I don't know if you can answer this or not, but the third option, um, the upkeep of the painting of the storm windows inside and out, would that be a yearly thing?
Probably not inside, but possibly outside, you know, anywhere I keep on top of them.
Yeah.
So they don't deteriorate and rot, and it might not be every year, it might be every couple of years or whatever.
Okay.
If we keep the original windows that are there now, there is definitely upkeep on the outside of those windows. And that probably is every, I would say, be- because of the nature of the beast and they're they're old and they have two hundred and fifty coats of paint on them and whatever else, it's probably an every two year, maybe three years, you could, I don't know. Because they're going to get the on on the northern side of the building like that, they're going to get some pretty heavy duty exposure.
Yeah.
And and um, you know, weather, so Jamie?
One other thing in my experience, I mean, you may know more than me because you're more
Maybe not.
And well, you're, you do this every day. Um, the interior storms, a lot of times end up with condensation issues.
You will get some between both.
You know, versus an exterior with an exterior storm, traditionally there's weep holes, so that condensation leaps out where with the interior, once you really can't do that, and then you end up with cell issues and that kind of stuff.
Right, you'll you'll get that even on.
Right.
New windows.
Right.
So, yeah.
I'm just, but if you put an interior storm with a new.
So so at this point, at this point, I would, I would like to rule out option two. I don't, because we haven't discussed that at all. Option two, I don't think is the option to go with, because we lose the we lose the aesthetics of of exactly what what Joyce is talking about with with the schoolhouse look. So I'd like, I'd like to rule out option two right off the bat, and then we can discuss option one and two or one and three in depth more, or we can go with it. Anybody opposed to ruling out option two?
No, I'm agree with, I'm okay with that. I mean, I I know Ron Lynn, just from a maintenance standpoint and well, taking care of buildings for thirty two years, so.
We can, we can move forward whenever somebody wants to make a motion, I guess, is how we can go, and then we can discuss it more. We need to.
I make a motion to go with option one, since it does still stay with the um aesthetics of the historic windows that are in the facility at the time. Uh, and I think it'll be a lot less maintenance in the long run. And we can discuss adding other windows um on the south side in the future, I guess.
Well, we could get a price on that and see if we want to do it, for sure. That's not a big deal.
All right, I'll second.
Any more discussion, questions, comments?
Um, I I would just like to suggest that uh because of the nature of this, maybe we should open it up for public comment before we vote.
Okay, I'm fine with that, Bob.
Maybe nobody has anything to say.
No, no, that's good. That's a, that's a really good idea.
Can I also add, um, in the budget that you have in front of you, I use the fifty three hundred um as the price for the window, just to put something in there. So if you go with option one, it's going to bring the projected cost up ninety one hundred dollars.
Okay.
Just so you're aware.
Okay, thank you for that information, Tara, actually. It's important.
I use the fifty three because I figured that was between the the between the two.
Your middle of the road, exactly. You're fine? Yeah, you use something. Right? Anybody in the room have a comment? Pauline?
Shall I go up?
Please.
Yes, please. It's easier to hear you.
Pauline Gunlon. The issue of having, why we didn't decide to put the windows on the south side was for the select board. We realized the openings had been there original, but we thought that if you were going to have large screens or do videos or whatever, it would cut down on the space, so that's just something to consider.
It's a good point.
That and outside light also.
Yeah.
Was especially.
Right, and the light coming from the south, if you have an early meeting, it could be, then you'd have to shade it and so forth.
That's a great point.
Yes.
All right. About the windows. The interior storms that we cost out and saw are made very, very well. It might be, uh, I mean, those windows have been there for years and years. How long would they last? Would you have to repair them every two years? I I doubt it if they're done well. It's something that you can think about, and if it, if they lasted ten years, how does that affect your budget now, or if you decide to do it later? Uh, it does take away from the old look, because it doesn't have the old glass. A lot of places use their old windows and are perfectly happy with them. I I've used them before and I have not had condensation, but not every interior storm is created equal. And so that might be something to think about. So uh, I guess that's it.
Thank you, Pauline.
Thank you.
Anyone in the um?
Oh, excuse me, I have one more thing.
Absolutely.
Okay. Even if about the lights, even if you have the interior lights, it does take away from the exterior from the interior look of an old schoolhouse, if you don't have the old light features. That was one of the kind of outstanding uh elements that they would have. Now, you could still keep the some of these lights, and maybe even if you had six painting lights, not the ones that were there, because we know they didn't match. Those we figured could be used somewhere else within the building. The uh, but you could maybe put in six just to get the feel of the lights. And uh, when I cost them out, I think they're about two fifty a piece or something like that. And they're good size, so it would give you the look that you're after to keep the historic schoolhouse look.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody in the waiting room, Hannah, would care to speak on this before we vote?
Just to flash up a picture to show you what she's talking about. When you're coming down Center Street and you see the building, you see when the lights are on when you're having your meetings, that people would see. So that would again make you feel like, but they're new lights. They're not old, you know.
Right, we can come back to that.
Isolated.
We can, the the lights, we can revisit that um, and I and I don't, I don't disagree entirely with, you know, I want to take care of the window issue at this point, and we can revisit the lights. Yep. You have on the windows?
Here, we go right from here?
Yeah, come on up, sorry, sit down. And just state your name for the for the people listening, please.
Oh. I just want to thank Pauline and the Historical Society for moving the project of the town's new office ahead. I think that's one of the things that helped to get to vote passed uh for the money to build the new town office, which for the last twenty years I've lived in Pownell has been on the agenda of the town to get done. So I want to thank the Historical Society and Pauline for the role they played in that. And I want to thank you all for the role you have played in a very difficult situation. I think it's one thing if you want to restore your forty eight Woody for display. It's a totally different ballgame if you plan to use it as a daily driver. And there are compromises that need to be made and difficult decisions that are often made in taking historic buildings and turning them into modern use versus just keeping them as a display museum. And I want to thank the board for moving this project ahead, and this is a really historic moment for the town that this is going to come to fruition, and it's something that everybody in Pownell should be proud of and something we can celebrate when we get everything in place and done. And and thank you all for for doing that, and you're 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 part of it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At the risk of sounding like I'm jumping on the bag bandwagon, um, I I agree with everything Walter just said. I mean, this was a an amazing uh proposition years ago, and we are now, years later, getting ready to move this schoolhouse. Um, I don't know who else in the in the room is excited about this, but I am very excited about it.
I think we all are.
Coming and uh I'm really, really happy to see it come into fruition.
I have a motion on the floor in a second for moving forward with the um option one of the windows, the Marvin windows that are going to look um exactly like the existing windows that are in the building on the north side, excuse me, on the north side, the big tall schoolhouse um windows.
I think we we had a motion in a second already, right?
Right, right, that's what I said. Yeah, any more discussion?
Fred, Fred Miller has a question. He's in the chat though.
Is it a question on the windows, Fred?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, please unmute us.
And unmute yourself. Oh, yeah, if you can unmute.
Things confusing the way it works.
Okay, um, I I'm, my question is, um, the price difference between option one and option three. Um, I think, am I, am I correct that option one is like fourteen grand and option three is four?
Yes.
So we have a ten, ten thousand dollars difference? How long would it take if if option three was was put into play? How long would it take for for the extra, the condensation to be a problem and the extra maintenance to to equal that ten thousand dollars? How many years? Would it be years, months? You know, how long? I don't know if you can, I don't know if there's an answer to that question, Fred. You know, that's that's certainly a variable. What I'm getting at is. Yeah, no, I understand. Consideration is the maintenance and upkeep. If the if the the option is to spend ten thousand dollars more to avoid that, when, you know, it might take, who knows, ten years, twenty years, we don't know how long, you know, to to actually, if you went with the four, four thousand dollar option. Well, I think, I think there's a, in my opinion, Fred, you know, we can certainly talk back and forth about this. I I think there's a, I think there's a um significant difference in energy efficiency on option one versus option three. Because those windows that are in that building, it's, it takes up a significant wall space on that one particular wall. And this is just me speaking, it's not my opinion. It's, the fact of the matter is, those five, I think it's five, right, Eric? Those those five windows on that side that that are in question, it it is a significant amount of wall space on that one particular wall. Now, I used to be able to tell you the formula and all that stuff, but I've been out of it for way too long to figure that out.
Well, quick, quick question on that. Also, uh, I think to 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 play off of that a little bit. Um, one is, I don't think it's a ten thousand dollar difference. I think it's it's less than that, because that does not consider what it takes to fix the windows, right? Or is that such an insignificant amount that we don't really consider it? That that I don't know. So it could be nine thousand dollars difference, eight thousand dollars difference, not not ten. Um, but a ten is a, uh, it is, it is less than, it is less than that difference. Uh, but then on the other side, and to ask the question, if we were to go with option three, which is the cheaper option, and then decided within the first year that that's really not a good option, it with some more data behind it, um, then how much more would it cost to to make that change? Or is it going to be more expensive to make the change after we've already decided to go with option three?
Oh, I think from my standpoint, when I was doing contracting, Bob, to answer your question, and I think Eric can solidify this, to change those windows after the fact is a significantly, the the cost of the windows, but to come in and change those windows after their siding and everything else is already on the building, that's going to be a significantly larger number than just to change those windows now and then side to one.
Side and interior.
Right, 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 right.
A lot of extension dam differences.
Right, it'll be, that that could be a fairly significant amount of money.
Yeah.
Plus the existing windows, there's probably seven or eight that have broken paint, so.
Right, all that has to be repaired, repainted.
Yeah.
I mean, that's not figured into that four thousand dollars.
No.
Yeah.
I think, I think we've done um, I think we've done our due diligence on this. Go ahead, Eric.
The only other thing is, uh, with those Marvin's, uh, it does have a significant lead time on them. I just want to put that out there.
What kind of warranty is around the twenty five year, eighteen?
Yeah.
Eighteen.
I think they're eighteen or twenty, so.
Okay.
Just just so everybody's.
No, I mean, the warranty.
Oh, uh, I'll have to check on that. I think these are the elevates. I think that's what you, I don't have it in the building right now. I don't know if you have the the paper warranty.
I'm dealing, I'm dealing with Marvin on a job that I did years ago, and and there's a window that's, and they're they're out of warranty, but they're coming to fix it anyway.
Yeah.
Just just to say, I I I don't know if that would happen here, but just my own personal experience with Marvin right now, it's it's windows that I installed quite a long time ago, and I have an appointment actually with them, with their rep coming um Friday to to look at a window, and they're out of warranty, they're going to come fix it. It's that easy. So they're a reputable company.
Yeah, I know they're better.
I I know, Jamie, I, you know. So I think, I think we've done our due diligence as a board to listen to comments, and I think we can we have a motion, we have a second on the floor, we can go around, and if it fails, we can move to another motion. Uh, at this time, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor? Angie?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
So go with the Marvin's. I think, I think one of the things that we should, before we move on to the budget part of it, one thing that we may want to revisit a little bit is the lights. If we can get Stan to give us um some numbers or an input on put using some of the lights as Joyce has shown us.
Yeah.
That's that's right, maybe not the exact one or whatever, I, you know, maybe we can get the exact one, Joyce, I'm not sure, but um. Okay, sure. So so if you'd be kind enough to forward that information that you have on the lights to um Tara.
Yeah, I can look it up for you, but.
Well, if you just get it to Tara, then we can get it to Stan, the electrician, and we can go from there. We know exactly, we're getting exactly what you're, what you're looking for.
Especially since you have like specific ones in mind that you've already looked at.
Yeah, exactly.
It's a pretty common looking, yeah.
You're just one of the ones that are hanging, right? Like a hanging.
And we can, we can certainly revisit that part of it and see, see what it would cost to add those in and bring that, because that's that's something that we can do after the move, and it is anyway, after the move and when it's here.
Something that we, even if we can't get them right away.
Right.
You can put the boxes in.
Right.
Then we can add them at a later date.
Exactly.
And also, I would just like to say with the windows, if they save one of the windows, Eric, you could make that into an art piece and it can be hung inside of the building. I've seen that. I actually have one in my bathroom that. I've seen that, I actually have one in my bathroom, that in the middle glass was put in a mirror, and on the outside it's still all the original glass, and it's absolutely gorgeous. So, you could also do something like that for that.
I actually have a couple of those from the Peckham House when I did the windows down there, so.
They're beautiful.
No, I, I, I have
Put on the wall.
I actually have three of them. That's, that's a great idea. And I think, I think we should, I think we should move forward with that idea, actually.
Actually, yeah.
There you go. We can put them on the south side and they won't, that's right.
Yeah.
No, I think it's a great idea.
We're trying to help you as much as possible, but also keep it efficient.
So.
But just on the lights, I mean, we could put the recessed lights, like we talked about in there.
Right.
And all of that those
Exactly.
And another switch, maybe even the ones that are there, you're saying to look at the wiring to see.
Maybe he can use those existing lights and rebuild them. Probably not, but.
I don't know.
No, I mean, all that's left of the ones that are in there, that I, that I saw was like two or three globes.
The top.
And they don't match.
Right, those are the only ones that were there.
Right, right. And, and the wiring, of course, there's nothing worth it. To, to have to go through rewiring and all that, you're better off just getting, you know, the modern.
Getting new that looks old.
Yeah, that's not ideal.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, as much as I'd love to see those go up, they, you know, but you'd want it to look
Cohesive.
Well, plus they're not placed where you'd want them to.
Probably not.
In kind of square.
And they've got one down for a finian, and so it's, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Got to be careful with this.
What's next, Eric?
So. We're good. All of our, all of our project discussion and decisions, um, are done, right? Do you have anything else?
No.
Eric? So now we're into the budget part of it. We're good.
Okay, so, um, just so everybody listening online is aware, the, in the document archive on our town website, you can find all of the stuff that we're talking about. Um, the drawings are there, the budget spreadsheet that we're looking at right now is also there.
You're a week early.
Okay.
Better than being late.
Really, actually, I think she's thinking of our meeting.
I think she's here for the DRB because Olden sent me a message too.
Okay.
That's okay.
Um, yeah, this is the way the month goes.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so, phase one, the town hall project. This is all of the money that we started with sort of before the schoolhouse even came into play. Um, phase one should be thought of as this building and everything it took to get into this building, uh, the moving costs, uh, the furnishings, all of that kind of stuff, all went into phase one.
The engineering right to it.
Yes, yeah, right from the start, from the down payment, the engineering, the permitting, all of it. So, currently, that is at about, well, it is nine hundred and fifty-eight thousand, six hundred and eleven dollars and thirty-nine cents.
That's our actual cost.
Those are our actual costs.
Do you just tell people what the estimated cost was?
So the estimated costs, um, you know, at the beginning of the project, and some of these estimated costs were two years old, some were plugged in, say, a year ago, some were not estimated ever or even in the budget. So the estimated projected costs were eight hundred and fifty-seven thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars and twenty-five cents. And the actual cost, I'll say again, was nine hundred and fifty-eight thousand, six hundred and eleven and thirty-nine dollars.
Thirty-nine cents.
Or thirty-nine cents, sorry.
It's been a long day for you, I know.
It's been a very long day today. And it really stumps out of all this meeting, so.
It's okay, you can write it down.
Um, so, if you look at the next spreadsheet, I don't, I don't need to go through every number, do I?
No.
No, okay.
So, just
They can do it online.
Just so that, just so that, without anybody having to do the math in their head or, or punch it in a calculator, like I just did, the difference is one-on-one, two-eighty-one, fourteen, an overage, um, of a hundred and one thousand, two hundred and eighty-one dollars and fourteen cents.
Because of the way that our
So. Two things, there's two things that made up a significant part of that, um, overage. Because I, I'd like to do this in two phases, if you don't mind, unless you have a
No, absolutely.
Okay. One of the, one of the differences was, um, the foundation price was sixteen thousand and four hundred dollars more. There's three things actually, sorry. And then some other small stuff. Uh, foundation was sixteen thousand, four hundred dollars. The building materials above and beyond what came from preferred builders was, was, um, a difference of ten thousand, three hundred dollars. And the construction costs and change orders, which were not estimated in the original, um, eight hundred and fifty-seven thousand, was sixty-two thousand, sixty, sixty-one and change, so sixty-two thousand dollars. So, there's basically three things that were the one-on-one overage, which were basically uncontrollable costs. Foundation price, uh, the building materials just took a jump on us because of the nature of the beast, and the, um, worked on in addition to the original contracts was, was sixty-two thousand dollars. So that's sixty-two, seventy-two, that's eighty, almost eighty-nine thousand dollars of the one-on-one was things that we had no control over, basically. And we can come back to that if someone has questions, but just so that everyone knows.
Well, um, Jamie pointed out the difference between the funds, that there you have a fund spreadsheet in front of you, and then you have the phase one. The, the difference is, this is the, the phase one money was planned to be used for phase one.
Correct.
But it wasn't enough.
Right.
So that's why it
And I knew we're talking about using, using the article money, no.
Right. So you're not, yeah, you're not going to get a match between what funds were available and on the
I just wanted to bring it up because I'm sure there's people out there that remember those numbers, that's all.
Well, yeah, let me get there, we'll
Yeah. Um, so phase two projected costs, these are all estimated costs. We have started spending some of the money, um, but most of these are estimated of what they, the total cost will be. And the total project cost for moving the school and finishing the entire project out is estimated to be two hundred and sixty thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars. Two hundred and sixty thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars.
Thank you.
Any, uh, questions? Is there any about that, Eric?
You just have to add the, the tenth for the new window.
Yes, yeah. So, yeah, thank you for pointing that out. So the two hundred and sixty, three hundred and thirty, you can add ninety-one hundred for that.
Be two sixty-nine, four thirty.
Any questions?
So, let's, um, I think we should, I think we should open, before we get into the funds portion of this, let's open up public comment on, um, the phase one portion of the, of the project, the nine hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars, what, what we've expended and, and where we sit and, and where we're at right now. So if anyone has any questions on that, I'd like to field those questions at this time. Any public comment? We'll try to limit it to three minutes if we can. It may not be possible, but we'll try. Anybody with their hand up, Hannah?
Nobody.
Okay. How about the phase two portion of it? Um, the estimated cost, and all, like, I, I think you said that, this will all be posted on our website?
It's in the document archive, so the same place that you go to see, like, board minutes or any of our agendas, this, you can access this information. Nobody's raising their hand.
Nobody has any questions on the phase two portion of the projected cost?
Nope. Anybody in the room?
Anybody, yeah, I should have asked anybody in the room first, I'm sorry. Pauline?
Uh, who is looking for Duncan?
Mr. Connors.
No. No.
No.
Nope.
That changed that.
Yep. Eric, I, do you?
Uh, it's, uh
Gold, is it gold?
Gould, Gould flock, uh, crane breakers. Please drive us Selkirk, New York.
Wow.
Um, I don't know what happened with Mr. Connors, but we weren't able to
Uh, I do know. I have left a phone message after I talked with you, Tara, to find out why he hadn't called back. And it's simply because he's totally snowed. He has two huge jobs and he wouldn't be able, it sounds like, get here till fall. And so, um, the, uh, the sum here for fifteen thousand dollars to move the building, is that accurate?
Yes. It is.
That's, that's a very good deal.
Very good price, yes.
So how is he doing it?
Oh, with crane?
With a crane?
Yeah.
He's lifting the whole thing?
Yeah, he has a, a couple of, uh, hundred and ten ton cranes. And he's only estimating that probably twenty-five to thirty ton, the way it says right now, so.
Okay. And that's the schoolhouse move, I should also
Two steel beams running, lengthwise underneath.
Right.
You're going to lift it up.
And it actually includes, um, you know, the utility companies and all that too. That's all in one line.
And fifteen thousand dollars utility companies?
Yeah, for, for opening the roadway and all that.
Yeah.
The whole access.
That's really a good deal. If, if that's true, that's accurate, because before they were talking about three thousand just to switch the electric.
There, I will say, in the schoolhouse prep, there is, because we have done some of that work for him.
Yeah.
Prep work, that the, the line iron right before there.
Yeah, the twenty-six.
So it would have been more than fifteen if he, if he did all the, the bracing
Correct.
All that stuff that he recommended us, us do.
That's a good point, Eric, thank you.
Right.
And that, that is a great point, in that, in that schoolhouse move budget, estimated cost, in that twenty-six thousand dollars is part of that move, Pauline, so it's, I, I think it probably brings it more apples to apples of what Mike Connors was going to charge, because, because they have some time in, in extra bracing or doing it differently. Sorry, I, I have to have my glasses to read, but I can see you, so I apologize. Um, so I think it's probably more apples to apples, to, you know, and I know, and I know you're getting, I don't know you're questioning why it's so much cheaper, but by the time we figure in the, the prep that they did for Gould.
Right.
Uh, you know, it's probably, and, and it may even be a little bit more.
We cut the beam pockets in the concrete and did all the extra bracing, so all he has to do is come and, and slide the C L M and rig it up, rig it up.
Go ahead, Tara, sorry.
I was actually raising my hand, it's Jim Coates, I think it's Jim Coates. Jim, it's, uh, has his hand up.
Okay.
Hi, Jim Coates, North Mason Hill Road. Um, first of all, just listening to Paula there, our Paulina there, um, I just want to thank you guys for really moving forward with this whole project, and I, I know you're, Tara, you're doing an excellent job. I mean, I'm, I'm sure it was passed down from the past, um, executive, um, assistant that was doing an excellent job also to see if this project could move forward. So, yes, you guys have put in more than enough time to really make sure that this project, the initial project, was completed, and it, it may cost a little bit more, it's been many, many, many years, and, and I, I just think that the people are behind you on this. Um, there may be a few that are saying that it may cost a little bit too much and things like that, but I think a majority of the town is just saying, you know, it's, it's been a long time, and I, I think it's something that's going to be really, really, really nice for the town. So, I thank you all very much, um, Historical Society, Paulina, and you guys, and Tara. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Jim. Um, I do want to point out on this estimated cost, uh, the concrete, um, figure of twenty-nine thousand, if we didn't do away with those sidewalks and, and stuff that we had talked about.
That actually includes the sidewalks.
All of those sidewalks down there, it does? The originals?
And that's the left, right.
Oh, okay, I'm, then I'm speaking out of turn.
So that would be actually less than
So, so it should be a little bit less? Okay, that, I like less.
We're hoping fingers crossed.
I like less. Fingers crossed. Okay, so I was speaking out of turn, sorry, I accidentally asked you guys. My fault. That's what you get for assuming something. Any other questions on the, um, estimated cost and, and budget portion for phase two? From anyone? Okay, let's move on.
Okay, so on your funds spreadsheet, you'll see phase one was sort of anything we had um, to cover this building and anything we used before we started using ARPA. Um, so you can see those figures in the total, it was nine hundred and forty-six thousand, one hundred and forty dollars, seven and six pounds. Phase two, you have, um, municipal office funds available as of July one for this year, twenty-three to fifty thousand. ARPA money that we currently have, we're going to use just under a hundred and eighty-five thousand of that. Um, I have a Historical Society contribution on this part of the table, uh, because that was before I spoke with Joyce, and maybe we can talk about that after I finish going through the spreadsheet.
Hmm.
So the total projected costs are at, currently, one million, two hundred and eighteen thousand, nine hundred and forty-one dollars and thirty-nine cents. The total available funds that we have currently for second round ARPA or any other funds, one million, two hundred and five dollars, three hundred and eighty-eight thousand and thirty-nine cents. Which leaves us with, um, thirteen thousand, five hundred and fifty-three dollars that will need to, uh, likely come from the second round of ARPA.
Which comes when?
Um, August, between August and September. So we should be fine. Okay, that's, yes.
So, I, I want to, I did some, I did a little bit of figuring here on this. Our, our proposal and estimated cost on the initial, when we went to the voters initially, was eight fifty-seven and change. The total project cost is one point two million.
Four hundred thousand.
Hmm?
Um, four hundred thousand.
So, yeah, so it's, it's between a thirty-five and forty percent increase in, in the cost, total cost of the project completed. These, you know, and some of it's still estimated, but I think we're really pretty confident in our estimates right now, because these estimates that we have right now are pretty solid. It's, it's not a whim, it's, it's a pretty solid estimate. And I, I can say that with confidence. So from start of project to basically end of project, because, because the end of the project is in sight. The end of the, right, I, I mean, I'm, I'm not, I don't think I'm the only one, I think everyone sitting in the room will tell me that, and agree with me, and I think everybody that's watching will, will agree with that, the end of the project is in sight. But from beginning until the end of the project, that increasing cost is certainly in line with the increase in the cost of doing business over the same exact timeframe, no matter if you were buying a car or, or whatever you were, you, whatever project you were involved in, the cost of, you know, your cost of business, for anyone who has their own, that, those costs are in line with the cost of doing business, at, at those numbers.
At today's.
At today's. Unfortunately
Yeah.
Unfortunately, it is an increase, and it's, it's a significant increase, but there again, I, I firmly believe and can stand behind it and lay my head down on my pillow tonight, knowing that we're in line with just, just the increase in costs over that, the number of years we've been involved in this project.
Material along the way they jump.
It's just, it's, everything, everything is just, you know, that, that cost is not out of line, the increase, it's not out of line. I wish it wasn't there, I wish it was a negative thirty percent or whatever, but, or even if it was flat rated, but it's just not, it wasn't possible, and, um
It's a real number.
These, these actually are one hundred percent real numbers, exactly, Jamie, these are real numbers. It took us a while to get there, but we certainly got there. Jim?
First of all, I gotta just say thank you, because it is a site that's really gonna look nice. Tara, could you just recap the one eighty-five, what is that amount?
I think. Oh, the ARPA?
Yes.
Is that what you're referring to? So we got, I think it was five hundred and nine thousand in the first round. Darcy Pruden was the earmarked, three hundred and twenty-five thousand of that first round for the new pump station.
Yep.
So the one, just under one eighty-five is what's remaining from the ARPA first round.
Okay. Which is super, I mean, I think everyone should just kind of take a deep breath and just say, you know, well, thank you very much to the government for the contribution to our town hall. We could all have wished, I mean, I think I've wished many times that money would come from heaven just to make this happen. I do have to ask one question unrelated, well, it's related to the building fund, but just, and I don't expect an answer tonight, Tara, this is between you and me, and you can get back to me with an email, but I just wanna just make sure we all understand that there were funds that were applied in the budget, this past voting budget, in the amount of a hundred and two thousand, five seventy-three, that were coming from undesignated funds. I'm not sure, there was also the woodland that was gonna be used for future town items, so I just wanna make sure those funds that were coming from undesigned, or designated funds, unfortunately, were used to offset the taxes. So just review, review that again, but I just wanna make sure that our taxes doesn't change because ARPA is coming in.
No.
Okay.
I am aware of an oversight, there was an oversight where those funds were not, were not moved to expenditures or something like that, and I will get you a better detailed answer.
Okay, that's fine.
Through email, but I do know what you're talking about.
Thank you very much.
Good thing.
Good luck, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have their hand up, Hannah? Anyone in the room care to comment?
Is that on the budget? I have something to say. Well, maybe it's compared to the budget. Twenty-five thousand.
Can we, yeah, can we talk about the twenty-five thousand?
If we, if we don't have any more, if there's no one else in the general public that wants to talk about it, no one on the board that wants to talk about this budget, or no one in the room, then we're certainly gonna move off the budget, we're gonna move to something else, and we won't bring it back up. Perfect.
Okay, first of all, this has been a really nice meeting, and we've communicated, and, you know, I've said it again and again and again and again, and I'll keep saying it till I die, and I want it on my tombstone. You gotta put unity back into community, and the only way we can do that is another C word, and that's communication. And throughout all of this, we have not been communicating quite up to par, both sides, all of us, everybody, you know, so so now we've really taken a giant step, so congratulations to us, okay, we did it, so let's keep it going, all right? I did have a list of things that, you know, the Historical Society was respectfully requesting, and some of these we touched on. Eric has convinced me that we are gonna keep the tin ceiling, we're gonna keep the oak floors, the slate roof is gonna stay. We lost the windows, but we're gonna have something similar. The schoolhouse style lighting is gonna be there, maybe, I guess we didn't say, I know.
I, Joyce, I'll be honest with you on that.
Yes, please don't be dishonest with me.
I'm not, I'm a black and white person, okay?
Be honest with you. I see you've been dishonest with me all night.
There's two sides to me, there's a black side and a white side, okay, and I mean, that's how I am, there's no gray area. I'm leaning towards adding some original style lighting into the building, okay? I think, I think your, your presentation, your photos, you know, Pauline, I think between the two of you, you've convinced me to add that in, if it's not a huge amount of money, and I don't think it's gonna be huge, but I, you know, especially in the scope of a one point two million dollar project, let's face it. So basically, I'm, I'm leaning towards, my vote would be to lean towards adding those type of lighting.
Good, thank you, Mike. There's one other thing we need to talk about. Chair rail and wainscoting. Oh, I was just getting to that. Oh, thank you. Well, I was gonna say.
Say it right up here, Paulie.
You might have something else to say, I'm gonna say, now that we got him in a good mood and he's open to this, and he's being honest with us. Just pulling your chain. There were two other things, one thing was, you know, the slate blackboard, and I know that you were saved those, and so if we can incorporate them in the room, I still have visions of I have visions of the, a piece of the blackboard or something there where you write your meetings and all that, and so when you start the Zoom meetings, it zeroes in and maybe, you know, it says the date and this, like, just to bring a little nostalgia back, so. And, you know, everybody wants that little feel of school.
I totally agree.
Yeah, so, oh, all right, I'm on the roll, watch out now.
Keep going.
So the tin ceilings we got, the oak floors we got, and of course, the slate roof, I guess, is still there? Okay, cool, and so we lost a little bit of the windows, but the slate blackboards, and here comes the wainscoting and the chair rail. That would pull it together as a schoolhouse. And we have lots of photos.
Keep going.
Well, I mean, that's, you know, y'all saw, y'all lived down south for a while. You all got to see the pictures of our wainscoting and our, okay. And it does, that was the feel, the color was not the feel, you know, but the two things was the feel. That with, with the lights, and see, we had some stands in there too, but with the lights, so when you come down the street, you'll see the lights hanging when you have a meeting. I think that would restore the feel. So that's, what's the other thing I had on my list? Just wainscoting. Wainscoting and chair rail.
I'm not gonna disagree.
Oh, God, love you. Is there a big cost difference as far as?
I can look into it, but I don't think there's a significant, no.
Wonderful, wonderful.
I think, I think you're absolutely correct, Joyce and Pauline both. I think there was a lack of communication, I don't, I won't say it was miscommunication so much. There was a lack of communication, and I, and I don't, I didn't, you know, I know, I know some people in the general public has said there's been miscommunication, I wasn't saying you. I think there was a lack of communication on certain things all the way through. And hence this meeting, that's why we called for this, so this was well before the last go-round of what happened. And I'm not gonna rehash that. So I think we, we as a board wanted that communication to be
restored.
And restored, no, for sure, but I also, I also think that for, for budgetary purposes and how much things were and where we stood, what our plans were, you know, moving forward with all of your things that you just brought up, that's why we called this meeting, so that we could get everything out in the open. There's no, we don't have a hidden agenda, we, we wanna see the project through.
We all do, for sure.
You know, at this point, there, like I said before, there's no turning back. Now we just have to, now we just have to keep moving forward and see the light at the end of the tunnel and go that route. I don't disagree with anything you have there, and I think that, that we can certainly look into the wainscoting and the chair rail, and I think the rest of it, you know, is already there, other than the lights, and I don't think that's gonna be a huge hurdle. I don't think that wainscoting and the chair rail is gonna be a huge hurdle. I really liked your idea of the chalkboards, I, I think that was a great idea. Because it is that nostalgia, I think Angie's idea of taking the windows and maybe using them on the south side as false windows, whatever you wanna call them, you know, I think that's a really good idea. Because it still keeps that original feel to, you know, for, to a certain extent.
To that point, you might even consider bringing them in here, maybe not all five, but four. And the reason I'm saying that is because you may want blank wall there, again, it depends on how slickwood intends to use that room, whether you want to show films there or whatever. I do have another suggestion about the tin ceiling. Before anything is really done in there, drywall installed or whatever, you may wanna consider spraying the ceiling. It could use paint, and it's in fairly good condition, but it's, you know, it's yellowed, and without anything in there, would be a perfect time to spray paint it.
It's definitely aged. It aged pretty well.
Yes, definitely.
I think, I think what I'd like to do, I'd like to, I'd like to make a proposal, I guess, so to speak, to the board. Because we do have an active Historical Society who's actively involved in this building. I'd like to make a proposal to the board that when we are at a decorating quote-unquote phase of the building itself, that we involve the Historical Society, chalkboard location, whatever, I just, you guys have spent a lot of time on this, you've put a lot of effort into it. You know how that schoolhouse should look much better than I do, I mean, I have my vision, but I haven't researched it out.
We didn't go to school there.
I went to school at Oak Hill, my first two years were at Oak Hill, okay, so. My first three years were at Oak Hill, I can say that, and there's not a lot of people lucky that can say that, but. I know, I know. We did. But, in all honesty, I think, you know, and I'd like to make that proposal to you, as long as the board is in agreement with that. And Tara, you know, when we get to that phase, the last, which is the last phase, right, we're ready to move in, then you guys come in and help us out.
With that said, the twenty-five thousand dollar contribution, I understand that your perception is that you would do it once the building is moved, and it would be for the history center, or can you imagine that?
Well, I sent you the word.
I actually have the letter.
Yeah, and basically, it was in appreciation of once moved and incorporated into the town hall structure, the basement of the schoolhouse will be used as a Pommel History Center by the Pommel Historical Society after pleasure. In appreciation for the use of the Pommel History Center, the Pommel Historical Society has pledged twenty-five thousand dollars towards its construction. And that was towards the construction of the Pommel History Center, that room, okay?
So from, from my perspective, as a voter, when I, when I voted for it, I was under the impression that it would go towards the construction of the building. Now, being here, I was also under that impression, I'm not sure what the board's thoughts are. But when you talk about construction of a room, the foundation that's there is part of construction, and that was over twenty-five thousand, so I'm just trying to.
Well, the thing is.
Figure out.
No, I understand where you're coming from, Tara, but the thing, the thing is, is that we, we know that the town had to put the foundation in for the schoolhouse, so our room underneath of it, it's just space, okay? So that's it. We didn't want the town to have, or the taxpayers to have to pay for, say, the sheet rock in that room, or the ceilings in that room, or the light in that room, we're not saying twenty-five thousand dollars goes to file cabinets or things that we need to bring in. A copier, you know, we are setting up a history center, we're trying to encourage people to come to town, and I think you had a couple of visitors this past weekend, doing genealogy, they got a place to go now, rather than calling me up and I meet them on the street corner with information about their family. So, so we're developing a history center, and that is to benefit not only the town, but people from all over the world, I mean, we've got people from England and stuff that roots have come through here. So, that said, the twenty-five thousand dollars was towards finishing up that room, and we say towards, because we didn't know what it was gonna cost to finish that room.
Of course.
Okay? But at, you know, at that time, we, we had, we had a pretty good cost estimate that twenty-five thousand would probably call, cover all that would take to finish that room, if not more.
The construction piece and not, not furniture and things like that?
Not furniture, no, we got our own furniture. We got our own creature. It's for construction, it's the sheet rock, it's the flooring, it's the lighting, it's.
With the heating and the.
And the heating, yeah, yeah, and when you turn it down forty-five degrees, does that mean that we're gonna be forty-five degrees downstairs?
No, 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 you'll have a separate thermostat.
I'm only teasing, I'm only.
Yeah, and that room has to be fire coated and the ceiling has to be.
You gotta do what you gotta do, no matter who's down there. Just like you have, do what you gotta do with the remaining of the, of the basement. You could have left that room just as a storage.
Right.
So we're giving you twenty-five thousand dollars to turn it into a room so that we can use. So it's sheet rock, it's ceiling, it's lighting. I suppose there wasn't anything else. Oh, yeah, the electric, yeah, but there's gotta be electric down there anyway, so, yeah, whatever, yeah.
So I guess my only question is, is when are you hoping that that, when is that planned for that to happen?
What, to get the twenty-five thousand? Once that schoolhouse is there, and we know that we got basement to do, you know, once, once that schoolhouse is there, and I assume Eric's gonna be doing the work, and Eric says, I'm ready to start working on that basement, we know you need the money to buy the material, we're not gonna hold it off and say, no, we wanna wait until the light over there works on dim, you know, not that, we're not gonna do that, we'll give you the twenty-five thousand when the schoolhouse is sitting there, we got a roof over our heads.
You'll feel you got skin in the game once the building's moved.
Exactly, yeah, 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 and we're very anxious, extremely anxious to get in there, because, you know, we got so much stuff, and we boxed it all up last year because we thought it was gonna be slam dunk, I don't know what we got, but here we are, but anyway.
I think we all thought that. But, you know, unfortunately, things just.
Here we are, yeah.
Things just took a lot longer.
Very excited, and, you know, matter of fact, when I, when I went away to Florida this past year, I transferred the twenty-five thousand into the checking account and, and, you know, gave everything to our secretary, because I didn't want anything to hold us up, you know, a lot is down there as treasurer, so I set it all up, so it's sitting there waiting, we're not using it.
Okay. I just wanna make sure we're all on the, all on the same page with that. Cause I wasn't sure if it meant furnishings and.
No, 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 no. Hey, if you don't use the whole twenty-five, and you wanna kick some back. But we would like to kind of, you know, meet with you and whoever's gonna do it, and kind of sit down and say, you know, this is, this is what we envisioned in the room, because this is how we want, you know, we want our desk to be here, or whatever, you know, we want an outlet here, or what, you know what I'm saying, yeah, so, just a little bit.
Effective sketch or layout.
Yes, we do.
That's the easiest thing to give to him.
Yeah.
So they can plan for the outlets.
Right, so that we can just, you know, all be on the same page and not go, you put the light right there, you know, that's not gonna be, you know, whatever, yeah. So, I, working together, communicating, I think we can pull this off pretty easily, it's not, it's just four walls. The end of the front, obviously, the door. And a walkway.
It's a nice space.
So are you, are you comfortable? Your questions have been answered?
Okay.
Okay. Are you, as a Historical Society, are you comfortable with where we're at?
We had one, two, three, four, five, we have five Historical Society members, that's everybody go, oh. I think this is good, I think this is good, I think that we can, you know, I think that we can accomplish this, and I think, again, we all should be proud of all of our accomplishments and all our contributions, because we contribute, you know, you know, not only.
Lot of mutual hard work.
Yes, definitely, definitely.
So Hannah, do we have any more hands up?
Nope.
So, before we. So before we adjourn.
We do have already an email chain going.
Yes.
I can add her. And would it, would you prefer that contact for the historic society remain you? So I can add you into that email chain?
Sure.
We good?
We can go.
Before we adjourn, I would like to just reiterate what I, what I had said earlier. This project has been, and, and what Mr. Klinger had said when he came up and Jim co-says, this project's been a long time coming. We've waited, the town itself has waited for a tremendously long time. There's been, there's been some noses bent in years past over projects that were proposed and not gone through and, and so on and so forth. I would like personally to thank everyone who's had a hand in this project from start to finish because it doesn't matter which phase of the project you've been involved in. As, as a party, this project certainly wouldn't have happened if you weren't involved in it, whoever you are. I think we've done an absolutely tremendous job in keeping our local businesses involved in the project. And I think there's, there's one thing that probably the most important thing to be said for that is that it's their project. That's how I look at it. It's, it's there as if they were doing the project for themselves because they are. Whether it's, whether it's our, that's right. And it, it goes back to, to your statement, Joyce, about community. And having our community businesses involved as much as we have has been a tremendous asset. Because number one, I think they gave us whoever they were. And I, I could name them, but I'm going to miss somebody and I don't want to, I don't want to miss anybody, so I'm not going to name anybody. But whoever they were that had been involved in this project, they gave us, first off, they gave us their best effort. And they gave us probably the best deal that we could have gotten on whatever phase of the project they were involved in. Because it is, it is their project as much as it is our project. And I think that's, I think that's been a, just a huge part of this whole entire process. And for that, I'd like to thank everyone who's been involved. We still have, we still have some work ahead of us for sure by getting the schoolhouse over here. And, you know, we're, we're three weeks away from, we're three weeks away from the move. So, you know, like I said, I'd like to thank everyone involved in this project from, from start to finish. And with that, I'm done.
Imagine that.
The only thing I want to add to that is just to make sure that Mike gets the recognition too, because he's the one doing the recognizing. Mike's involvement in this has been tremendous, as well as many others. And I don't want to, I don't want to itemize, but I also want to remind everybody of the hurdles. I mean, two years of a COVID shutdown, we had a main contractor pull out of the project completely. I mean, there, there's just been hurdle after hurdle after hurdle. It, it's great to be here.
I hope this meeting has given clarity to people that have a lot of questions out there in the public, so.
Well, I think, I think if there's any questions, we can certainly answer them. Or if they haven't been answered, I'm not sure what we missed. And I think Tara, I'd like to thank you for this presentation. You worked extremely hard on this. I know it's been taking a lot of your time and it was incredibly accurate, incredibly detailed. And I think that's probably one of the reasons that we didn't have a whole lot of questions involved in the whole process tonight. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Sound moved.
I'll second.
All those in favor? Angie?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you.